Welcome to our meeting for the Bossier City Regular Council Meeting. This is Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. It is 3 o'clock. If you would, please silence your cell phones. We're going to have a call to order. Invocation by Councilmember Scott Erwin. Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Timothy Larkin.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Lord, we pray for the city employee who recently passed from cancer. We pray for her family and for her loved ones. Lord, we pray for all those who are hurting or sick in our city. And we pray for wisdom, Lord, for our nation, our state, and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
And if you would, join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Erwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
All present.
All right, I need to approve the minutes of March 19th, 2019, regular meeting and dispense with reading.
To move second.
First by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Darby. All in favor? Can't vote yet. I don't know, it's spinning and spinning.
He was late again.
Have you refreshed it?
I have.
Trouble's over here.
I vote yea, though. You want to go get my other machine?
Mine isn't chroming.
It's just spinning.
You're in crime.
I know that.
Mine doesn't have the vote button.
Is that why it's spinning?
That's encouraging.
No, I don't want to check out the bracket. There you go.
Don't touch it, Jeff.
Phyllis, you are the best.
Oh, did something change? Where's my vote button?
In Cub Scouts, we had a den mother.
Okay.
All right, I know what to do. Of course.
Mr. Darby, did yours go through?
Yeah, no.
Did yours come up?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I voted five minutes ago.
That hurt.
Mr. Montgomery is learning from the new system quite well.
I am. I've become technologically savvy.
Come on now.
All right, I need to approve the agenda.
Make motion, approve today's agenda.
Second.
First by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Please cast your vote.
This is really good.
All right, our ceremonial matters in recognition of guests, Ms. Dawson and Mr. Wilson from United Way with the Alice Report update. Mr. Wilson's not here.
Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Rashida Dawson, and I'm the Vice President of Financial Stability for United Way of Northwest Louisiana. Dr. Wilson does say his regrets, he is actually out of town on business at this moment. But I wanted to actually be able to come here to report to you today about our Alice Report. And I'm not sure how many of you are actually aware of the Alice Report. But to get started about what is the Alice Report? It's that it stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. And so these are the working poor families and individuals who are basically one paycheck away from a financial crisis, a major financial crisis. We've actually had about three Alice Reports, and this is our third installation of the report. So what's basically changed from the Alice Report from two years ago until today? Basically, we have a few metrics and methodology when it comes to the Alice Report to measure those who are in need. We have housing, childcare, food, transportation, healthcare, miscellaneous items. But what's new to our Alice Report this year is actually technology. We wanted to be able to include these, the cost of these things, because when we think about it, and I think everybody had this situation up here, is that technology has become a huge part of our lives, especially when it comes to a smartphone. So we wanted to be able to include the cost of how much that will cost for a household. And then also, the taxes were actually a little bit different this year. Instead of using the state's taxes, we wanted to be able to use the tax foundation to be able to have a more adequate number for us to report. So what's changed when it comes to the Alice and those who are in poverty households for Bossier Parish? In 2016, for Alice households, about 17% was considered Alice. And then we had poverty households of 23%. And now, when it came in 2016 for the report, 31% of households in Bossier Parish are considered Alice and in poverty. However, since our new report has just recently come out in January, the numbers have changed. So actually, they have increased when it comes to the Alice population of 28%, but at least it has gone down when it comes to households in poverty. However, overall, the total Alice poverty households is now 46%, which is nearly half of the Bossier Parish area. So when it comes to Bossier City, which is a little bit different, in 2016, the report was 31% was actually considered as Alice and/or in poverty. But now the numbers have risen, and now there's 46% of those who are considered Alice and in poverty. When it comes to Bossier Parish, the median household income in 2016, you needed about $51,000 in order to make ends meet, or that's how much someone had as far as coming in their household. Now, in the 2018 report, about $48,000 is coming inside of those households, which means that incomes are now dropping for the median. For Bossier Parish as well, for, we wanted to be able to measure two things. We think about someone who was single and an individual, but then we also think about a family of four. And what does that family of four consist of? It consists of two adults, a preschooler, and then also an infant. For someone who was single, they need about $17,000 to make ends meet for the household survival budget. For a family of four, it was a little bit over 46. Now, in 2018 with our report, someone who was single needs to make at least $20,000 in order to make ends meet before a family of four, you need about $58,000 worth of income to make these bare necessities, to be able to afford those bare necessities. But we also want to think about, these are literally the very, very low spectrum. This is not necessarily saying that you have a car, your car payments, and then also your insurance. No, we're talking about numbers of public transportation. We're also talking about daycares, especially when it comes to the family of four. And it's not the daycare that we would definitely want for our children. These are the ones who are low, low income because they can't afford anything else. So what is United Way doing as a whole to be able to help those who are Alice and those who are also in poverty? Well, we have a few things. We want to thank the City of Bossier for actually helping with our 2-1-1 program. And for those who don't know what 2-1-1 is, is that's basically a hotline number to be able to access 365 days of the year, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So even on holidays. And you can call that number to be able to find out about different resources that inside of the community, everything from workforce, utility assistance, and then any other household needs. Also, when it comes to financial stability and our financial stability work, we have a program that is called Bank on Northwest Louisiana. And that is to help those who are the ones who may need a bank account but who don't have access to it. But we have 13 banks and credit unions who partner with this program. Since the inception of this particular program, we have been able to bank over 4,400 individuals since the end of 2013. And then also, we have the VIDA program, which stands for VIDA Volunteer Income Tax Assistance. And that's basically for those who made $55,000 or less last year. They can get their taxes completely prepared for free. But what we want to do is we want to be able to have asset building opportunities for these individuals. And during tax time, there's no better time for them to be able to save, right? Because they can spend, like, on average, about at least $200 to be able to get their taxes done. Think about that money that can be put inside of a savings account for them to be able to go and get ahead of everything else. And then also, we have a new initiative that's coming up, that's a Financial Empowerment Center. We're going to be able to provide free, one-on-one, professional financial counseling. So everything from credit, homeownership, and even just from a basic budget. We want to be able to help these individuals to be able to know how to navigate emergency circumstances and to be able to build their wealth. Do you have any questions about the Alice Report?
Ma'am, appreciate you coming and updating us.
Thank you, President Free. Anyone else? Thank you.
All right, next we have a proclamation for Bass Pro Bowe Fishing.
Gentlemen, we're just going to do a proclamation to Bass Pro for what they mean to this community, and then give you the opportunity to speak if you'd like to, Don. Whereas Bass Pro Shop has been a phenomenal addition to our city, not only as a premier anchor to the Louisiana Boardwalk, but as the host of many outstanding outdoor tournaments and championships. And whereas, one such tournament is the U.S. Bowe Fishing Open, which will take place in our city and region and waterways on April 5th through 7th, 2019. This will bring 250 to 300 four-person teams from across the nation, as well as invaluable national exposure to our area. And whereas, a trade show from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. will be held on Bass Pro property, so that all may enjoy the benefits of having such a prestigious event in our city. Now, therefore, I'll render the welcome, Mayor of the city, do hereby proclaim, August 5th through 7th, 2019, is Bass Pro Shop and U.S. Bowe Fishing Open Weekend in Bossier City, and ask all our citizens to join with me in participating and supporting this noteworthy tournament. Still, and where city is here, and my signature, Don, and the mic is yours.
That's why I've got your signature, right?
You do.
We're good, right? Well, we're excited to have the event this weekend. We're expecting to bring in somewhere between 750 and 800 people from across the nation to participate. Most of these people are families. So we're looking for a good shot in the arm for the local economy. A lot of them are already in town on the way to the meeting. And we had a couple of guys from Colorado I was talking to that was really excited about this. But it's also good for our environment. A lot of the fish that they're taking out of the lakes and rivers are invasive species that, you know, compete, are game fish. So we're shooting for a number, somewhere around 120,000 pounds of trash fish that we're going to take out of the lakes and waters this weekend. So we'd love to see you there. Thank you. Any questions?
Congratulations.
Don, I understand, are they bringing some machines to actually process the game fish into, I heard they were going to process it into pet food.
Yeah. Yeah, we've actually found a company out of Mississippi that works with catfish farms that processes their heads and backbones for different, they're protein reclaimers. So they're coming in with a couple of reefer trucks, and they're going to take the fish, and it's all going to be dog food.
It'll be used.
Yeah, it'll be used, it won't be wasted. Cat food. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Kelly, you can get up and come up here.
Come on, Kelly.
All right, next we'll have a committee report. We've got Robin Jones from the Bossier Arts Council on her first quarter 2019 East Bank Plaza update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, you should all have a Plaza report in front of you. And so I'm just, I'm trying to make it as simple as possible, but to give you the most amount of information. If you look at the first page, you'll see a first quarter event recap. So these are the bulk of the events that we've had. And I gave you the number of guests that attended and how many officers that we needed for that particular event. And all of the officers for these events have been paid for by the person putting on the event. And then in blue, you'll see the upcoming events in the Plaza. Every Tuesday night, we have the East Bank Market. Every Thursday, there's a family bike ride. And then you'll see a list of dates upcoming. And then on this third page, you'll see, actually, I'll give you a few minutes to look over the events in case you have any questions. Okay. So throughout our first quarter, we've had, you know, it's a learning curve like we talked about. So we've had, the number one issue that we're having is the number of security officers that are required for the events. It's one per 50 people, and that's really been cost prohibitive. And so we've lost some bookings because they just, it's not in their budget.
Robin, can I ask you a question here?
Yes.
On this, does it matter the type of event, or is it a flat?
It's a flat, one per 50 people.
I thought we had this discussion last week where the chief said that that's not necessarily always true. Chief McWilliams?
Chief can come up. I'll give you an example. Friday night is the Bossier Schools, they're doing their talented arts, the music recitals, and it's for officers for, and I think she said there may be 75 people there, and the number they were given is four officers. And they can't use their SRO officers who are willing to donate their time because that's not part of the policies.
Well, that's inaccurate. We weren't provided any information that this was a school event, a school-sponsored event. And if that is true, they can use their SRO. We don't have a problem with that. And the number we was given was 280 attendance.
For the run of the event? But remember, we put the hourly, how many people are there per hour? And it says 75 people per hour.
So we can revisit that. I mean, that's not a problem. We've, actually, we did have some discussion this morning after our staff meeting about looking at the way we're going to staff that.
All right, to solve this communication gap, who will speak for East Bank and who will speak for our police department? To determine these.
Sergeant Warren handles the actual coordination with the security.
All right, and then who would be the East Bank person to negotiate or determine how many people are actually coming? Because this is the second time we've had this discussion. So I'm just trying to figure out who we need to get with who so that we get a plan in.
Sorry, on the application that they fill out.
No, no, I won't, who from East Bank is going to talk to?
It's me.
Okay. So he's giving you the name, and obviously, this is again the second time that we've had a discrepancy between what our chief says and what the information that you're giving to the city council today, correct?
Correct. Actually, we had, I had no.
So what I'm trying to say is, let's get this resolved. And I think if you sit down with Chief McWilliams, and y'all can come up with a plan and a determination as to how many officers are needed with specific types of events, whether it be school and so forth, so that we, you know, get this resolved between y'all.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good.
And I would just like to say, Robin notified me of this dilemma, and I sent an email to Pam and to the mayor regarding this. I had not heard back from you, so I was thinking that it had been resolved.
It's not been resolved.
I think this, Miss Pam got that Friday, is that correct? Because you were out of town? Right. And we, like I said, just got on yesterday, and we discussed it this morning.
I'd just like to approach these events from a solution orientation and not some formula that we come up with. But look at the groups, look at the budgets, look at the type of people that are coming. I mean, we've up in the band recitals at the East Bank Theater where there's 10 people in the audience, and there's 50 in the band. And to require four officers is not only unreasonable, but it's cost prohibitive, and it just knocks out the event. And my objective is to have events down there. Now, if that's not our objective, then all of this bureaucracy and unreasonable assumptions is working to stop events. But I think we want events down there. So I just encourage y'all to work together and come up with fast solutions because I guess there wasn't much time in this particular case to come up with a solution.
Well, she submitted her application several weeks ago, and it says Bossier School Talented Art Program. So I don't know how that wasn't clear that it was a Bossier School program.
Who did she submit it to? We need to.
So the way that process is, let me start with that, I guess. They have an application that I give them that they fill out that asks them per hour how many people they expect, and then a total number of people that they expect for the duration of the event. And that's something that chief and I had sat down and talked and added that line as it came up. Because that was a, when you say there's going to be 500 people there, that doesn't mean that 500 people are going to come and stay for four hours. And that's how they were basing the number of officers in the beginning. So we added that, how many people per hour versus how many people the entire time, to kind of give them a little bit more accurate description. But they fill out the application, and then they take it, once I sign it, they take it over to the police department. They give them an estimate number, an estimated number of officers, and then they bring the completed contract back to me.
Okay, so that's where.
Okay, so that's where, who, they, they take it over there, who are they talking to at the police department?
Sergeant Warren.
I just trying to make sure they're, they're all communicating with the right people that you just told us.
And then before we give them permission to even do the event, they have to get it signed off from, from the police department.
And for a school event, if they have SRO officers, they can be used, I would.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that, that'd be a tremendous help to these, uh, events.
But she was told by the police department that they were not, that that was not okay.
Well, we're working through it, so.
Right, so, so yes, that's great, that's wonderful.
That, that's going to solve a lot of the budgetary problems right there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, some of the other things, um, through our merchants meetings, the merchants are really happy with the increased traffic. I can't quite explain it, but there's this really cool vibe and someone who walks to the brewery and has their pizza and then walks down and has coffee and cake and, and even onto Bojacks and to, and to the axe throwing. There's such a, um, a big group of families that are down there. And, um, and the demographics are just all over the place. It's fantastic. So we can see from the foot traffic where art sales have increased. I, you know, the, the sales throughout the, through all the merchants are, they're all really happy, I should say. Sorry, I got tongue tied. Um, there's just a couple of other little things that, um, that I noted that have needed to be replaced and have replaced. I just wanted to kind of give you, um, some issues we've had with parking, but that was again before the parking lot opened. And, um, we've created some, some vinyl signs for some of the businesses who people were parking in their parking lots. And, um, we adjusted the trash pickup, so now that's, that's great. And then we have an issue with, um, campers. Somebody is bringing their camper down there and parking in the, by the plaza and plugging their campers into the food truck things. And we've, we've ran them off, you know, three times. And so, um, you know, I don't know if, if maybe we, and that was not a problem we anticipated either. So maybe it's that we kill the power to those plugs when it's not in use.
Robin, do you, Pam wants you the contact point for that? That, that's who you need to talk to about that.
She is, she is, and she's in.
But I'm just saying, make sure we don't have another, because Pam can pick up the phone call, Chief, and Chief can take care of it, you know?
Yes, yeah, yes, I'm just, this is just things that we've encountered, just so that, full disclosure, you, you see what we've been.
Are those electrical outlets marked for like, uh, no campers or food truck use only? Does it say? I've seen that in some cities where they, uh, that must be a consistent problem. So maybe one first step would be properly marking those, so there are no camper plug-ins.
I don't think you should have campers down there anyway, should you?
Well, the last one, actually, the last guy, he said, well, we live over in the horseshoe parking lot and we go over here and charge our battery and so.
Go back to horseshoe.
No, I, I, someone, someone made a call to horseshoe, just saying. But, um, but yeah, th- there's just little bitty things that, that we're, that we're learning as we go. But, um, and then on the back, you'll see Instagram events created this, this map. So people that come in the businesses, um, can take a little map to go with them. And that's, that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Now, ma'am, we appreciate you coming today.
Great.
Unfinished business.
Adopted ordinance appropriating one, one million dollars from the twenty eighteen LCDA bond issue for improvements and renovations to the Bossier City Animal Control Facility. Final reading?
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Barkin. Questions from the audience on this agenda matter? Questions from the council?
Adopted ordinance authorizing three hundred thousand dollars to come from the jail and municipal capital building fund for retainage wall around the police evidence and storage buil- buildings to prevent flooding. Final reading?
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Review bid results from the sewer sub basin B C fourteen that were taken under advisement at the March nineteenth, twenty nineteen city council meeting?
Uh, council, after legal review, um, we've decided that we're going to award this bid to David Lawler Construction.
Lawler?
Lawler.
Lawler. All right, any questions from the audience? Yes, sir, please come to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
Morning, excuse me, good afternoon. My name is Collis, C O L L I S, Parrish, P A R R I S H. Address is fourteen four four six Twisted Oak Lane, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero seven nine.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Appreciate the time this afternoon. Uh, I understand the decision was made on this contract, the B C fourteen project, uh, to be awarded to Lawler Construction. Uh, I represent P M Construction, who was the apparent low bidder, uh, at the bid opening on March nineteenth. Uh, wanted to bring it to the attention of the council. Um, we received a letter that was dated March twentieth indicating that, uh, P M Construction's bid was not in accordance with RS thirty-eight twenty-two twelve, uh, for, uh, regulating, uh, ways in which bids need to be properly submitted. The main thing that was outlined in that, uh, in that paragraph is that it indicated that we apparently did not, P M Construction did not acknowledge, uh, an addendum that was associated with that particular project. Uh, we, uh, as a result of receiving that letter, uh, did file a formal, a formal protest, submit a formal protest letter, uh, to indicate the reasons that we believe that we had been, um, that we had submitted the bid correctly and fairly. Um, a couple of those things just to mention is that on the, uh, we, we submitted the bid electronically through the bid sync system, uh, which is utilized by, uh, Bossier City for, uh, publicly procured work. And with me today, I have, and it was included in our, uh, our protest letter. The electronic copy of the bid, the biggest letters on the page say, Addendum One, March twelfth. The addendum changed the bid items, we bid all the correct bid items. The addendum changed bid quantities, we bid all the correct bid quantities. And the electronic bid clearly states addendum number one, which is the one that apparently we did not acknowledge. Uh, so we do protest the fact that we were, uh, not being awarded a bid on, on the, uh, on the merit of not recognizing addendum number one. And it's a shame that, uh, if the decision is made to move forward with the second place or the second lowest bidder, that because of what I would consider to be a undis- undisclosed technicality, if anything, uh, there was no, there's no formal place within the bid sync system for you to acknowledge an addendum. Um, again, the printout shows that it is acknowledged inherently within the, within the bidding process. Um, and as a result, if P M Construction is, ends up being deemed a non-responsive or irresponsible bidder on this project because of that, what it means is that we're now spending, or the city of Bossier is now spending, um, tens of thousands of dollars, uh, to award to a secondary, to the, the second lowest bidder instead of the lowest bidder.
I had a question. Mr. Hall, his remedy course, our legal opinion you've rendered and, um, their bids thrown out, their remedies at state court in Benton, is that right?
Yes, I, in the, in the opinion that I sent to everybody yesterday, I included the protest letter that raised all the issues Mr. Parrish raised. But simple fact is that the bid specs require you to acknowledge the addendum. We get bid sync, uh, bids all the time and people note in the notes section either that or they attach a letter acknowledging the addendum. Neither one of those was done this time. And I, and I agree that, that bold print would have been fine if it had been sent, but it wasn't given till the next day and you're required to acknowledge it on the day the bid's open. So it's not even relevant to that issue. So simply, simply put, failing to acknowledge the addendum is, is not something we can waive. It's a requirement we put in the bid, you have to comply with it.
And this is not the venue to debate this, that the, the place that his remedy is, is in state district court in Benton. So that's, Mr. President, I'd just like to let you know that.
Thank you.
And we need a motion to, uh, accept the recommendation of the bid.
I make the motion.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Are there any other in the audience that would like to comment? Any other questions from the council? All right, new business.
Whitney's opening of sealed bids for bid number P one nine zero nine wastewater treatment plant, uh, water treatment plant ozone system improvement project.
Council, the engineer's estimate and the budget for this project is two hundred one thousand four hundred dollars. It's being funded from the Water Capital Contingency Fund. There is one addendum. It lists the attendees of the mandatory pre-bid meeting, made changes to specs and drawings, and provided questions and answers. The first bid is from Axis Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. The bid is for one hundred twenty-eight thousand even, one two eight zero 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 point zero zero. The next bid is from Dixie Overland Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for one hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars, one three four five nine eight point zero zero. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P one nine dash zero two North-South Waterline Connection Project, North Face.
Councilman, the engineer's estimate and the budget is two million nine hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars. To be funded from the Water Capital Contingency Fund, there is one addendum that listed the attendees of the mandatory pre-bid meeting and provided questions and answers. The first bid is from A S B Utility Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for one million four hundred four thousand two hundred sixty dollars. The next bid is from Belt Construction. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. The bid is for one million nine hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-five cents. That's one nine two three four nine five point six five. The next bid is from Polly Construction. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for two million two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, two two six seven zero 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 point zero zero.
Can you just repeat that again, Stacy?
Two million two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. And the last bid is from Wicker Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum, the bid bond is included. It's for one million eight hundred forty-four thousand one eighty-five fifty, one eight four four one eight five point five oh. Ask that you accept the reading of these bids?
Second.
The first bid was one four four two six zero?
Yes, sir.
And that, this money, is that, that's coming out of the sixty million LCDA?
No, sir.
No, this is water and sewer? Okay.
Who made the second? I got a motion by.
Uh, first by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Harvey.
One million four oh four two sixty.
All right. Questions from the council?
I had Mr. Roche back, just so I can get it straight in my head. If you can, you can get this later, but the separation of, um, the projects, what's attributable to Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way versus our normal water and sewer projects? If you could get that and get with Stacy, I'd appreciate it. I'm getting old, I can't keep that straight in my head without having a piece of paper. Thank you.
Adopt zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by M P C petitioner Amanda Carroll, L C S W. Location, twenty fifty-three East Texas Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for community service facility.
Counsel, I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this application. Uh, there's a very thorough letter of intent in here that explains what her operation is and her background. Uh, we held a public hearing where there was, uh, the normal three hundred-foot radius notification. There was no, uh, opposition to it. It went pretty smoothly at the, um, M P C level.
All right, any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? All right, please cast your vote.
Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by M P C. Petitioner Jean Goodman, Bayou Axe Company, location five oh nine Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for on-premise consumption of beer and wine for a commercial indoor recreation facility.
Second.
Uh, once again, uh, we, uh, held a public hearing for this. There was no, uh, opposition, no issues at the M P C level. Uh, the owners have worked extensively with the Office of Alcohol and Tobacco Control of how their, uh, beer and wine would be dispensed and sold in the place. And, uh, that was all, I placed that in the ordinance as, uh, A T C will be watching that. Gave them age limits of who could go in the establishments and such along with that.
Is it like a regular bar? Is it twenty-one or is it different or?
My understanding that they're going to have a little small area that will be a bar, uh, but it's kind of like a bowling alley, but people will be going in and out of it. But the A T C has limited the age allowed in the establishment to over eighteen and over only.
So will they be able to hold a beer in one hand and throw an axe?
I don't think so. I don't think their liability insurance will allow that. But, um, it's pretty strict, uh, restrictions on how they'll do that, their insurance company.
All right, any questions from the audience? You'd like to come up and, you all have to, but you're welcome to if you'd like to make a comment. Okay.
He'd feel more comfortable with an axe in his hand. I agree.
Uh, any questions from the council? We have a first by Councilman Williams and a second by Councilman Harvey. Please cast your vote.
Thank you.
Counsel, the next item, hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, seventeen forty-one. Counsel, the next item, hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, seventeen forty-one School Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven eleven twelve. Ms. Harville has sent word to us today that she can't be here today and she's asked that, uh, you guys continue this item until the April sixteenth meeting.
Make a motion, we continue to the April sixteenth meeting.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Montgomery to table this item. Any questions from the audience on that? Or the council?
Uh, table, continue.
Correct. Yes, what did I say?
Table.
Table to continue.
No.
No. Continue.
We continue, don't-
No table.
The word, yes.
Take the table out.
Table is not a good word.
Really?
Correct.
All right, the motion to continue this item. Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance levying a tax of twenty-three point three six mils on all taxable property within the limits of the city of Bossier City, Louisiana for the year twenty nineteen and providing the manner of assessment and collection thereof. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance modifying chapter fourteen, animals of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances. First reading?
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Are there questions from the audience on this agenda item? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating nine thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance to cover the update to the city of Bossier Code of Ordinances. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Three second. Councilman Williams first, Councilman Montgomery second? Sounds good. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate a hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars to come from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to be used for the operational needs of the Century Link Center. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating three hundred fifty thousand dollars from the twenty nineteen E M S Capital Contingency Fund to purchase two chassis for am- ambulance remounts and to fund a remount of an existing chassis. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance declaring three point one acres of property surplus to the needs of the city and authorizing the sale of the property described in Exhibit A to the Bossier Parish Police Tree for the construction of a new central library for the appraised value of eight hundred thousand dollars. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin.
Jimmy, what do they could do with the, the library over there now?
There's a lot of conversation about, uh, moving some of the government offices that are in Benton, uh, there and, and, uh, maybe some collaboration between the sheriff and the city and the nine-one-one people taking part of the building. So, uh, those conversations are taking place. What they're claiming to do is build the new facility and keep the library open until it's done and then move those people in there and then opportunities will, uh, be assessed at that point.
Any questions from the audience? Additional questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance re-appropriating four hundred thousand dollars from the North Gate Road Capital Projects appropriation. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Montgomery.
It was a tie. I gave that to Councilman Williams.
Well, my him comes before W.
That is correct. Second by Councilman Montgomery. I give you that one. Any questions from the audience?
Gotta make people laugh, man. I mean, everybody's going to sleep.
They're not laughing. They are going Tik Tok. Uh, questions from the council? Cast your vote.
It's like Tiger Woods the runner, huh?
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come from the twenty eighteen LCDA bond fund for the municipal complex camera system phase one. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams. Second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate twelve thousand two hundred dollars to come from the sales tax capital contingency fund to be used to contract with E S R I consultants to facilitate moving current geo databases to new servers to include training and technical support. First reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Irwin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for salvage and disposal according to law. First reading?
So moved.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approved reported change order number four for the East Texas Gravity Sewer Main Project for an increase of a hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Total cost of contract with change order, two million eight hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty cents.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to authorize the city to enter into an agreement with K T B S television station to promote the East Bank District Plaza and fund twenty thousand dollars to come from the Hotel Motel Fund to facilitate the Freedom Fest Friday events to be held for May thirty-first, twenty nineteen through June twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience?
I just want one for Jimmy. Just to, I wanna be damn sure we're okay taking this for the, from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund.
Yes.
Additional questions from the, uh, council?
What was the, uh, the chief said last time there was a, uh, requirement for police to get overtime? What, what is, why is that a requirement?
So this, this is a, a city-sponsored event, correct?
Right, is it? I think it's K T B S.
Right. So they're gonna be working for the city? For doing the security. So they're gonna be paid by the, the city. So when they're acting in the scope of their job for the city, they have to be paid overtime. When not, and according to F S L A rules.
I thought they were not designating the, it started out at ten thousand, now it's twenty. They, they had not decided what the money was going to be used for, yet.
Well, the way I understand it, the appropriation is ten thousand, it's gonna be-
Well, it's twenty now. It was said last week.
And I provided a budget number for the security for the five weeks and it was a little, a little less than eight grand. Correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, it started off at ten, it, it is the same numbers, Mr. Darby. We, we added the actual cost of the police to this ordinance. The ten thousand dollars was the original amount that K T B S was asking for, for the city sponsoring of, of this event. Then we talked about the cost of the police, the expenditure for security for it of overtime and, uh, Deputy Chief Barclay came back with approximately about an eight thousand dollar figure based on eight officers. And we didn't know if the project would grow leading up to that fifth door, so we, fifth, fifth Friday, so we, we rounded it up to ten thousand dollars. The same ten thousand was talked about, is still here, but we didn't know the actual cost of, of the police and that's where we came back. So that's the reason it's now not ten exactly, it's twenty. Because we're, if you read in the body of the ordinance, it's described, there's ten going toward the sponsorship to underwrite the cost of the event and ten for the overtime.
Okay. So is it, is it a city project or is it K T B S, uh, project? I, I'm not, I'm a little confused now.
Well, as Ms. Elkins explained it last Tuesday to you, uh, we're looking, we're calling it a city, city event with K T B S act- acting as our producer of the event. They, they will there, take the ten thousand dollars, underwrite the cost of the ba- the bands, the staging, the, the, the sound and any, any, any other equipment they be need will be coming out of that rather than us doing it ourself. We're, we're underwriting that cost and calling it, uh, Freedom Fest Fridays. K T B S is taking, uh, working with the city, promoting the city and promoting the East Bank area during those five Fridays for that marketing cost that, of an end kind that they're helping us promote East Bank, promote Bossier so people will have, have an opportunity to see what's in that East Bank and the opportunities that that area can afford them. So I would call it a city event. Yes, sir.
So the only thing really we're paying is just for overtime for the-
We're paying the overtime for the police. Yes, sir.
Chief, when y'all work at, at the Century Telescenary, that's, y'all just get your minimum four hours and whatever?
That's ran by, uh, S M G and they, they actually workforce, they get paid from S M G because they coordinate it.
Yeah, but it's not overtime thing, is it?
No, it's a, it's a thirty dollar rate, thirty dollars a dollar. Correct.
I thought, okay, well, we'll talk after, after this about that. Okay.
Any other questions, sir? Thank you.
No other questions? All right, cast your vote. All right, any announcements, mayor?
No, thank you.
Any announcements from our staff?
I have one request, Mr. President. On the, um, on the project of the Y M C A, do you think maybe next week we can get a update on that? I don't, I don't know. We've not heard anything for a while. That's nothing new?
I haven't heard anything.
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Darby up, be clav.
Okay.
Is it with you?
You, you have some update?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Outstanding. All right, meeting adjourned.
David.